...is our EOS liaison, what is it? Partner, consultant. And it was one that was just an easy, quick fix when he said, you know, a lot of schools try to register kids together. And I thought, we don't have to work really hard to implement that. So it's not so much as a new initiative as let's think really strategically about what we can do as the pieces and parts are moving to get kids into place. And then the building, the scaffolding, and the study groups and all of those kind of things have been, we've been in conversation about those for the last two years. Covid really interrupted a lot of that. And so now we're building that in place in PDs and trainings over the summer.
Thank you. Brother, any other questions from the board? Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is item 3.5. This is the leaders of the Paducah Middle School House Program.
Okay, so the meeting has been a little stuffy thus far. So we're gonna have to kind of loosen up a little bit. I noticed there's some breaches in the house, so I just want to, we're gonna break the corn for a minute. And I want you all at once. We're not gonna do individual, we're not doing the roll call thing. But I just want you to let us know that you're in the building, okay? So I'm gonna turn around and y'all just go, okay? One, two, three. Yo, yo, hey! Oh, six. Okay, that's wonderful. Now, here's the point that we're gonna make. These individuals have a crew and they have a cause. They have a group of people that are like-minded, they have shared goals, and there are things that they're gonna do. With those things, they also have camaraderie, they have a social network and individuals that they can lean and depend on. So what are we doing, Dr. Hudson, at Paducah Middle School to prepare our students to take on AP? We're building a community that truly does already have a crew and a cause that we're gonna get this thing together and we're going to achieve at high levels. So at this time, I'm actually gonna turn it over to our four heads of house. Our first head of house, let me go in order because I'll get in trouble. All right. First head of house for the House of Altrismo is...
Where is he?
I'm right here.
Mrs. Terry Livingston. Come on ahead. The head of house, the House of Amistad, Mr. Shawn Yarrow. For the Green House of Courage, it is Mr. Dylan Howard. And for the head of house, the Green House of Dreamers, of the House of Revert, Ms. Emily Taylor.
I'm not gonna take a lot of time because this is the students making, we're just here facilitating. But I am Dylan Howard, I am the head of house for the Green House of Courage. Issa Bindi, who are you with?
It's the Bindi!
Thank you very much. So our crest here, we have two animals, we have the lion and the mute swan. Now, they're very different animals, but we feel in Issa Bindi that we take those timid mute swans that don't talk very much and we turn them into courageous lions that are ready to thrive into society. So I'm gonna give it over to our Shaka and our Nkosi, both African words representing leaders and warriors in Issa Bindi. We have Mr. Jude Williams and Mr. Aiden Smith, who will give us some more information about Issa Bindi.
So first up, the mute swan. At the top of our crests, the swan. Its beauty speaks speaking volumes and its discernment, a reflection of the storied tradition of Zulu leadership. Astute, compelling, and unwavered. The ibini tree, the African ibini tree, tree, sorry, pays homage to the awe-inspiring beauty of the continent, of our heritage. Courage, Issa Bindi, means courage in the language of Zulu. The Zulu Acts, the ancient Zulu Acts, here in the time of Shaka Zulu, pairs shrewd thought with the power to stand firm in the name of protecting land, people, and spirit. The lion, the center of our crest, is the lion. Living in a pride dedicated to family, he is revered throughout the world for his enviable strength and courage. And the green, the color green reminds us of the rich and abundant resources of that world.
Okay, so Issa Bindi is really special because we have a really important house heritage. Issa Bindi is a tight-knit group of individuals, like in African pride of lions, where family means everything. In Zulu, the Issa Bindi means the word courage, and that really represents us because we are a courageous group of people. Our symbolic animals are the mute swan and the lion. It's a house that knows when to be strategic and creative, or when to pull back and be reserved, but also to, when to go with full force and power and strength.
Now, let's see our students in action for the House of Issa Bindi.
This is the symbol for Issa Bindi.
Turn the volume up a little bit. No, he's got it, he got it. You got it, Charles.
This is the symbol for Issa Bindi.
Hey! 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 R-S-R-E-I-N-D-I, that is how we S-T-A-Y. Who are we? 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 R-S-R-E-I-N-D-I, that is how we S-T-A-Y. Who are we? 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 Wow!
Right.
Shawn Yarrow, House of Amistad. You know, wow, tonight's been very informational, to say the least. But three things that jumped out at me before, I'll turn it over to Ms. Claire here. I've heard a lot about test scores and how do we get involved in middle school? And first of all, the changes that have been made this year have been incredible. But what we're trying to do is provide a sense of belonging. And when I saw that earlier on her last report, that we were talking about the equal opportunity in the AP classes and your comment about how do we get more involved in the AP classes, right there at the top is student motivation, number one. Number two, growth mindset. Number three, confidence in success. Being a former college baseball coach, I absolutely love this house system. It is an opportunity every single day to bond with my house, to bond with these other kids. But the most important thing is that not every kid that walks in the door gets an opportunity to be a part of something. Not every kid that walks in is a baseball player, football player, or on the academic team. Some kids feel lost, they feel reserved. This is their opportunity. This is their opportunity to come in, spin that wheel, land in a house. And sometimes it's exciting and sometimes it's a disappointment because they didn't land in one of the four houses they wanted to be in, but they grow into a family. And instantly, when you walk into that middle school, that middle school, we've had great leaders in the past. Ms. Houston Jones, I tipped the cap, you did a wonderful job. But what's happened is we're not starting at the ground floor with the kids that need it the most. And the fact is, like, giving these kids a sense of belonging is gonna take care of a lot of things when it comes to student motivation, growth mindset, confidence in success. House of Amistad, we are the house of friendship. We throw the heart at each other, we throw the keys crossed. And I love it because that's the last house I dreamed I'd ever be in. I'm like, man, like dude, yes, my players, I am not Mr. Keys Crossed. But somehow, oh, Mr. Ross is turning this guy into a teddy bear, I guess. I'm cuddle bear now. But I am so proud of what we've been able to accomplish with this. And so we have put a huge group of leaders in, and I will, before I turn it over to Ms. Claire, our L President, she was one of our co-presidents. One thing we did different with our house, we chose all of our leaders in pairs. Because the one thing I heard while ago was that, man, we could recruit in pairs to get AP classes, we could schedule in pairs. As a former college baseball coach, let me tell you this, every player recruits another player. And it's how you build sustainability in any organization you build. And so we thought we'd have two presidents, two vice presidents. And so rain or shine, somebody's there to work, somebody's there to make a difference and mentor these kids. So without further ado, here is our president, Ms. Claire. She is one half of our presidents, Mr. Layton, who is not here tonight, is her other half. And so they do a wonderful job, I don't have to say much else about her. There you go. Tip of the cap.
First, the crossed arms are our keys. The crossed arms symbolize the keys to unlock the gateway of friendship. The castle, angering the center of the shield, the castle represents our foundation of power and protection through camaraderie. Friendship, the name Amistad is Spanish for friendship. We are the house of friendship. The peacock, the peacock is our symbolic animal, a creature representing the heart's desire to love and protect a friend. The peacock has a preserving spirit that never quits and never dies, just like us. The knight, the knight is the symbol of the protector. While the peacock sits quietly on top, the knight shows that a fierceness lies within. And red, Amistad is the red house because red is the color that embodies the kindness of the heart. Amistad is the house that originates from Mexico, a group of individuals that are quiet but powerful. They are known most for their kindness of heart. This is why, in the language of their ancestry, their name means friendship. Incoming members are often a mix of extremes. Our students can be extremely intelligent, creative, friendly, and competitive. Amistad is a very diverse group.
Awesome, thank you, Claire. Before I play the video, the peacock, weird animal, like, I say that, like, it's kind of odd and kind of weird.
Just like it.
Kind of like some of your teachers, and kind of like some of our students. And, but you know, it's such a quiet animal, and when we picked leaders this past year, it was so odd because I always heard a teacher go, really? That kid wanted to be the president? Or that kid wanted to do this? Because they weren't the typical people you thought would step up. There's diversity, there's lower income, higher income, we come from all walks of life. And that's what's awesome about this, it's beautiful about it. We can literally mesh kids, and I've seen kids come out of their shell, and I've seen peacocks literally spread their feathers and fly, okay? Maybe this video will show you a little bit of it, okay? So I guess I hope.
Amistad, you make the hearts symbol, or you can cross your arms, form the symbolizing the cross keys. And then you...
Hey! Ah, ah, ah! Hey! Ah, ah, ah! Hey!
This is little Layton.
Hey! S-T-A-D, who are we? Do you know who we are? We're the House of B, House of B. Hey, my, S-T-A-D, who are we? Do you know who we are? We're the House of B, House of B.
And we don't have a peacock blow up yet, so. If you guys got one, let me know, we need one. I'm still working on the hose right there. Next up, we've got Altrismo. This is our head of house, our pastor, Mr. Terry Livingston.
Hello, my name is Terry Livingston, I'm the head of house for Altrismo. I thought that I was gonna be last because the best usually comes last, but they just stood up on me. There's a lot of rivalry between especially Altrismo and Revert, so. Our house is the Black House, I'm not gonna say a whole lot about it because our student president, Ms. Jada Meadows, is going to fill you guys in, so here she is.
I'm Jada Meadows, I'm the president of House Altrismo, and our, uh, our sign is a diamond, and the diamond is, diamond in the shield is the center of the crest, and it represents the importance of protecting others and mutiny and wisdom. And we also put heart on top of our, uh, sign, the heart sits on top of the crest because the heart is where kindness, generosity, and purity are born. And we're the House of Givers, and Altrismo in Portuguese, um, that's what it means. And that is what we are known for being, the givers. And our animal is the griffin, which is the head of an eagle, well, with the head of an eagle and the courage of a lion. The griffin is one of the most powerful, powerful of the animals, known for both strength, grace, and fierceness and wisdom. And our house color is black, and black is also one of the colors that contains all the other house colors, representing, representing our goal of empowering all others.
And just to kind of tap into what you mentioned, a lot of our kids maybe didn't buy into the house system at first, and then we had our first house day, and like Coach Albro said, like, you have kids stepping up that, you're like, where did that come from? And if my parents stopped me at the pharmacy or the grocery store and been like, oh my gosh, like, my child was nominated for an office, and like, they want to do it, and I'm in shock, and I'm like, well, that's great. So we do really have kids, and it's been very family-like, and it's, it's been a great thing, so.
Altrismo traces the origins of the brain force, of the Amistad, where a group of powerful Brazilians which give, were given the name because of the Portuguese meaning behind the givers. This special group is known for striking a balance between bold strength and altruistic giving. A team that knows, that knows the real power comes from looking out for yourself and empowering others. They care deeply in lifting others up, but they also maintain a fiercely, yeah, competitive spirit and pride. Historically, the house, the house has been known for its smart and driven students. And Altrismo has produced more valedictorians per class this day. Its members have been very involved in every club, committee, and activity that a school offers. Therefore, Altrismo takes great pride in being, uh, sorry, uh, of royal leadership and still a strong spirit within new members to grow into the life of this legacy.
Hey! 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 You're the best, you are, you are, you are, you are, you are, you are, you are. My heart, you are, you are, you are, you are, you are.
Our cheer was also the hardest one. Alright, so here we have the House of Revert. Hello, I will say blue is best, and you say the best for last, so. I'm Ms. Taylor, I am the head of house for House of Revert, the House of Dreamers. We are a French house, and all of our leadership girls have French names. And I will say that the thing that I've gone to in my mind every day this year when I go to work every single morning is crooked across, along with complete growth and grace. But for Mr. Ross, I have really, I've really tried to instill that this year, and especially working with kids that, for example, are in special education, kids that fall through the cracks, kids that don't have a place, like Coach Albro was saying, they have that family, and they have someone outside of their classroom and a home to come to. So I will introduce our pole mark and vice pole mark, Ms. Christian Anderson and Jaren Anderson.
As she said, I am Christian Anderson, and I am the pole mark of House of Revert.
Hi, my name is Jaren Anderson, I'm the vice pole mark of House of Revert.
And we are the House of Dreamers, so. So as you can see here, the knight, it symbolizes having dreams and letting nothing stand in your way.
The unicorn is a symbol of freedom, healing, and beauty.
And our name, Revert, comes from the French for dreamer or idealist.
The crescent moon symbolizes the new beginnings and the making of dreams into reality.
And the color blue instills confidence and passion while releasing all fears and anxiety. Revert is a royal house who name, whose name is, French means dreamer or idealist. Because the, because the members who build, build this group are students filled with freedom and will abandon who recognize their dreams and will let nothing stand in the way of achieving, of achieving them. This can be seen in the unicorn, which is on the center of the house's crest, a powerful creature who is in, who is almost impossible to tame. Similarly, the House of Revert is a house of passion.
Revert is the natural rival of Altrismo because in the early days of house championships, Altrismo beat Revert by a single point, and they held a winning streak over them for three years. In 2011 through 2012 school year, the will did not sort very many students into Revert, and so it became the smallest of the four houses. But the staff leader, Ron Clark, rallied these students together and told them, this year, because our house is smaller, we have to be bigger. We each have to multiply ourselves this year. And that was the year that Revert, despite being the smallest house, went on to win its first championship. This legend is now passed down to remind students that the size of the house is not as important as the size of the hearts and efforts of its members.
And that is the House of Revert, also known as the Best House.
You better do this.
Hey! 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 Who? Who? We are who, hey? 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 House. 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 We are who, hey? House.
Good job.
Hey, just so you know, I'm not dancing with any crew until I get a peacock, that's all. Oh, I'm boycotting that, so.
And Altrismo have the hardest things to kind of mask off.
It is, like, it's so hard. And I know you guys have been here for so long, we really appreciate you guys getting these guys the floor, they've worked so hard, that's what they do. And I feel about you guys, when somebody says something bad about Big Blue, it hurts my feelings. It hurts my feelings, like, those middle school things about the rules being, ah, you know, it hurts my feelings. But let me tell you this, guys, this system gets in place for three years, you're not gonna see no more of that on the board, because these kids won't be at that school. They're proud to be at that school, okay? And let me tell you, when they walk down the hall, like, it, there's no more, who's our person, you know what, they're gonna love being there, and that's what this has done. We're all buying into it, we need you guys to buy into it, we're on this game. And I promise you, I promise you, three years from now, this is going to be one of the best things that you've ever seen, and it's gonna, it's gonna have residuals that carry you up, but it's also gonna set a shining example for what these little types can do and where they want to be. And that middle school is gonna slowly become a awesome place of magic for those kids to cross in and become young adults. And I think it's gonna change our test scores, it's gonna change our academics, okay? And, you know, I don't mean to talk too much because it's this guy's light, but I'm telling you right now, we love this guy, and what he's doing is magical over there.
Yes.
There was a lot of concern when we had the four houses, that, oh, well, how are you gonna have unity? We've got four houses, but we're still one tornado family, and you're gonna see in this video how we bring them all together to be truly leaders in the house.
Leaders in the house, leaders in the house, how we. Leaders in the house, leaders in the house, B-B. Leaders in the house, leaders in the house, B-B. Leaders in the house, leaders in the house, B-B.
Yeah, right. Thank you all so much for your time. Board members, I did give you a guidebook so you can read more into some of the nuances, the wheels, and how students are kind of divided into the houses, the role of the heads of house, and the different student leadership roles, as well as the council of seven and the council of seventeen, you'll see some of those things in there, but I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Y'all, the student board members.
Who are our next kids to be coming in?
Yeah, just one of them would have needed the house.
So the wheel has arrived. So you will be able to spin the wheel as student board members, you know, you're gonna be the only Tillman student that will be able to have a house. I got you.
Why is this, Mr. Ross?
I don't have a question.
Why does, why can't board members be in?
I'm so glad you asked. So the council of seven has determined that we are going to open this up to the community for a fee. So anyone can join our house system and hopefully get slide certified, you would just have to pay that good price of $19.95. But really, there will be a fee. Miss Kelly, you know, we got that SPD and we got...
He is a part of Altrismo.
Yes, she is, yes. As a parent, you're naturally a part of your child's house. We have a few houses that are divided, where, you know, mom has to be, Amistad on this side, Revert on this side, that's all good, and we love that. And then once you're in a house, it's a lifetime commitment.
I have a comment, and I just want to say, middle school outstanding. I really appreciate the teachers' enthusiasm, the children's enthusiasm. That's huge. I'm so proud of what you guys are doing, just keep up the good work.
Yeah, good job.
Any other questions, council? So thank you so much, this is great to have you all here tonight, and all of the presenters tonight, potential wealth of information. Board's really grateful for all the time and effort that you put into everything that you all presented, the diagnostic items in the reports on our agenda. So thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item, which is item 4.0, hearing of individuals and groups. And this is an opportunity, if you wish to speak, we usually have people sign up in advance in the meeting. I don't know if they had a sign up sheet out there last night, or if they did, if somebody could bring that down to me, if they didn't, that's okay, Peter's here to speak, he'll have enough time to speak. We typically will take comments without discussion. We ask people to try and confine their comments to five minutes, and conduct themselves with civility. So with that in mind, item 4.1, this is an opportunity for oral communications from the audience regarding items which are included on tonight's agenda.
My name is Ladania Massey, and I'm a 1988 graduate of Paducah Timlin High School. I'm also the daughter of Cheryl Massey, who is a retired Paducah City school teacher. She desperately wanted to address the board tonight, but unfortunately, late last week, she had a severe accident and is unable to physically appear tonight. But she has a very important invitedness that she wanted to deliver to the board tonight, and she coaxed me to come speak in her place. So I, she's written out a statement, and if you would indulge me, I would like to share her written statement. To Dr. Laboon, Dr. Hudson, Dr. Okogu, Mrs. Hancock, and Mrs. Howard, thank you for the opportunity to address the board. I'm a lifelong tax-paying member of this community. I've been a student and a 32-year teacher in this school system and feel personally vested in what happens to the Paducah City school system, and I'm deeply concerned about what will happen in the future. Mr. Shively, when all the debacle was going on about your blackface antics, I also saw young people on social media talk about the good things you've done for them, how you had helped them and how their life might have been different without your teaching, your counseling, and your coaching. That being said, I had no argument with these young people. I believe what they said to be true. Mr. Shively, you were a good teacher, coach, mentor, and counselor. All those good things are the reason you got the job as superintendent. Board members, I hope you agree with me as I make this statement, you reward good teachers by promoting them, taking them out of the classroom, when they were doing such a great job in the classroom, and replacing them with teachers who are less talented or less competent, and you wonder why students don't do well on state tests. I can imagine that you all have heard of the Peter Principle, a concept in management developed by Lawrence J. Peter, whereby employees are promoted based on their success in previous jobs until they reach a level at which they are no longer competent, as skills in one job do not necessarily translate to another. The proof is in the school report card and the diversity study that was done. The promotion brings a better paycheck, but less self-respect, and a job... and a job poorly done, which causes a loss of confidence in yourself and others in you. A good teacher and incompetent superintendent, Dr. Shively is all petered out. Our children deserve better. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. I'm gonna go, uh, to the people who have signed in, Pastor Anthony Walton. So actually, what I think I'll do here, this is item four point one and item four point two, we'll take both of those together. And those are opportunities for oral communications from the audience regarding items which are on the agenda. And item four point two is an opportunity for oral communications from the audience regarding items which are not on the agenda. So we'll take both of those at the same time, I'll go to the signup list, and then if other people wanna speak, I'll, we'll allow you all to speak as well, so.
Okay, so it's my turn?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, board members, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. You're getting a copy of the things that I have on, uh, this list of issues. I'm basically an advocate for truth, justice, and grace. I have some, uh, members I need, I need to come down to kind of put a face to the issue that I'm, I'm dealing with. Most of it, the members of Christ, uh, of these issues are from Christ Temple, at least three of them. And, uh, I wanna kind of put, again, put a face to the, the issues. Just to know, for you to know, I am here in total opposition of you renewing Mr. Shively's contract. That's what I'm here for, uh, for no other reason than that. And I, I have three people here that I wanna discuss. The first one is Rod Thomas, he was, um, he was a basketball coach. Now, he's a member of Christ Temple, he's a minister, he's over the, um, Brotherhood. He preaches, he teaches, I've been knowing him since, since college, um, came down here from Murray. So I know his heart and I, I know him. Now, just information about him, he started as the girls' assistant basketball coach, then became the girls' head coach. Now, let me start right here, I, I gave Mr. Shively a copy of all this, I went to his office and read all this to him. He was assistant basketball coach, then became the girls' head coach. His overall record was a hundred and five wins and twenty-five losses. He was a girls' head coach for four years. He then went to being the boys' assistant basketball coach, to being the boys' head coach. Overall record was fifty-five wins, thirty-three losses. He coached the boys' basketball team for three years. Overall record as a coach, he won seventy percent of the games he coached. He won three Kentucky Association Basketball Coach of the Year awards and two Paducah Sun Coach of the Year awards. He was then approached by Superintendent Shively after his last winning season with the boys and was informed by the superintendent that they wanted to go in a different direction. He was then given an ultimatum by the superintendent, resign or be released. Of course, he chose to resign because he felt disrespected and he really didn't want to be anywhere he wasn't wanting. That's why it was reported he stepped down from being the coach. Ultimately, he was hired by McCracken County High School. One man's trash is another man's trick. Okay, Vanessa Barna, this is her, uh, she is over our Young People's Department. She, I've been knowing her since high school, since she was in high school, at the, uh, she became a member of Christ Temple. I wanna just read just a little bit of this, I know I got five minutes, I think, but I'm gonna do the best I can. Any type of preacher, sack, uh, he's gonna be through this. Bring the lunch. Shortly after all the charges were dropped, everybody's familiar with, with her case, it was all on television and everything, uh, for what she, uh, did with a student, uh, in her room. Shortly after all the charges were dropped concerning this unjust suspension and termination, I went to Mr. Shively in hopes he would reconsider his decision and consider reversing his judgment. Vanessa Barna and Katrina Farmer were assigned to a behavior classroom to manage students with challenging behaviors. Most of them were black. The majority of the time, they had to maintain order, and there was very little time to teach. The most violent student was a white student. This student stabbed a teacher at Clark Elementary and was sent to their room. At this time, he was in the room for two years. The student was never injured and did not have a documented diagnosis for autism in his student file. His individual education plan was for emotional behavior disorder. Ms. Barna's teaching certificate was not for special education. There was a room for students with autism and other severe disabilities. But this student was never placed there. This student was shot at them, calling them evil niggers and other derogatory names. He attacked them both, he also attacked students. And he attacked them both, he also attacked students. Reports were made, but his parents did not want to hold the child responsible for his actions. Mr. Shively supported the parents. This, these incidents were reported, but nobody did anything about the child's aggressive behavior. The parents complained that their child was being secluded and demanded that the violent and aggressive child be allowed to sit outside of the cubicle. Administration approved this, and his violent attacks increased. There was no report, there was no support from Mr. Shively or the behavior specialists he placed over them. Mr. Shively met with Ms. Barna prior to her suspension. He asked her to explain the footage of her pulling the child in secluded. She explained, he said he had to report the incident to the police and Child Protective Services, but he himself didn't believe the child was in any danger and believed there was an issue due to lack of training. Ms. Barna went back to work, and they were both suspended by the end of that day. Both were told not to speak to anyone about this suspension while Mr. Shively completed an investigation. They were both terminated three weeks later, even though charges had not yet been brought up against them. They had excellent work performances, no write-up, and a good evaluation from the administration. At the termination meeting, Mr. Shively explained that he spoke to the Paducah Board of Education's attorney. He was told it wasn't serious, and if he didn't believe the child was in danger, a report wasn't necessary, but to retrain them. Mr. Shively decided not to take the advice of their attorney. In my opinion, he didn't want to end up on the news like McCracken County School District, in my opinion. So he decided to report it anyway, yet he received the same outcome in their favor, no report needed. Mr. Shively reported them to the Educational Professional Standards Board. He reported them to Child Protective Services and the Paducah Police Department. The parents put pressure on the DA's office and charges were filed, not because they were guilty of a crime, but because the parents felt they had the privilege to punish two women they thought were beneath them, and Mr. Shively supported this. The case was brought to court, dismissed, and all charges were dropped. The Child Protective Services case against them was also closed in their favor. Their records have been expunged. Both teaching certificates are still in good standing, but they have yet to be reinstated. Due to Mr. Shively's negligence to effectively manage those in administration and authority and his failure to support them, a bad situation was made worse. As a result, the students lost two valuable teachers, and these teachers lost their jobs. Because of these extenuating circumstances, the court decided to drop all charges and expunge their records. These circumstances should have been considered when Mr. Shively made his final judgment on these two teachers, which severely affected their chances of obtaining reinstatement in this district. The last one is Carolyn Webb. She's also a minister of Christ Temple, I've known her for a while, she teaches, she preaches, she, um, does it all. She's also over our Sisters in our church. She was employed in the transportation, if you guys got all of these, you can follow me. I'm reading this, I won't mess up anything. Ms. Webb was employed as a transportation department of the Paducah Independent School System. This incident happened in twenty fifteen, but I'm, I'm hearing about it, uh, recently. After working for three and a half years without any infractions, this unjust, merciless, and inconsiderate decision not to renew her contract started with a simple request for a day off for a grandson's graduation. Her then supervisor was offended by the manner, by the manner in which the request had been granted and became highly belligerent and extremely verbally abusive toward her. She felt bullied, highly disrespected, and humiliated, which severely affected her emotionally. As a result of this verbal assault, her union representative was notified, and the supervisor called a meeting with them both at the Board of Education. The supervisor came in the meeting and slid a termination slip across the table, firing her with no infractions and a more than commendable evaluation. You have a copy of her evaluation with you. The union representative and Ms. Webb made continuous efforts for a sit-down meeting with Mr. Shively to get a clear understanding of the purpose of the termination. However, Mr. Shively continued to reschedule, but never followed through, thus never giving her an opportunity to get a genuine explanation of the termination. Subsequently, Mr. Shively sent his assistant to relay the message of his refusal to renew her contract. She was informed because she was not tenured, she wasn't deserving of an explanation. With all the heartbreak and trauma of this termination, she left being owed three point five personal days and thirty-three sick days she never received. Last page. These are my concerns, board members. Mr. Shively claimed he wants to recruit and maintain black teachers, but his track record proves otherwise. Since his, his employment in this district, he has fired twice as many blacks than whites. An example of this, of his prejudiced mindset, among other things, is when a white male teacher at the middle school put a black student in a headlock, drags him to the office, and threatens him. He gets rewarded for his actions with a promotion to Paducah Middle High School. Yet any, yet not any of these individuals and other blacks receive any grace, mercy, or consideration, or compassion, from minor to no infractions at all. These individuals had, all had financial obligations that were not considered. He proposed as an indication to support his claim of being non-biased was to bring to the forefront the two black principals who supported his actions. However, knowing the lack of evidence needed to be terminated and knowing the vindictive spirit, they were left with no other choice but to go along to get along. He is arrogant, a bully, and heartless. He intimidates staff and is known to be vengeful as well as vindictive. He has a spirit of being untouchable. If this board, I don't mean anyhow when I say this, please don't take offense, if this board vote in favor of renewing this contract, you are helping to promote the spirit of racism, bigotry, oppression, and the spirit of white supremacy, the same spirit that has plagued this country since slavery. If the board renews this contract, these black men on this board are no more than tokens. Our proposal is, they should be reinstated with back pay for an unjust and inconsiderate termination. You have any question for me, or do you have any question for the?
Pastor, Pastor, who are the people with you tonight, I think you interviewed one.
This is Vanessa Barna, she's over our Youth Department, uh, and she basically is a member of the Christ Temple Church, and she's, I've known her for, since she was in high school. This is Carolyn Webb, she's over our Sisters in our, in our church. I've been knowing her for, for quite a while, she's a minister, preacher, and teacher and all that. So, so she, uh, for nine years, I've been knowing her. So this, this is, this is, uh, and Rod Thomas was not, was not able to be here, but I did speak for him. So anybody else have any questions at all?
Somebody else with you also, I didn't know if you wanted to, there's one other person.
This is Ray Jones, he's kind of like, um, my, my adjutor, just in case somebody wanted to jump on me. Cause I know Kung Fu Chups aren't good. Any other, any other questions at all?
Any questions, any questions with the board?
All right, thank you so much, thanks for the time.
So there's one other name on the list to speak, uh, tonight, and that's Joseph Reeves? No, okay. Are there any other members in the audience tonight who would like to speak on items which are included on tonight's agenda? Or would like to speak on items which are not included on tonight's agenda?
Evening, board members.
Evening.
First, I wanna say Pastor Walton, still here, great job. Segue into what I want to speak about, and so, uh, glad you brought up those ladies and the situation with them, and also Rod Thomas, uh, with his situation.
I know you, but please introduce yourself to everybody, too, just for, just in case people don't know you, tell us who you are.
Thomas, I run the Zion Deon White. As he said, the people, they didn't get any grace and mercy when Dr. Shively's blackface picture came out. One of the first things he asked for was grace and mercy, which, like Pastor Walton said, he didn't give those ladies or Rod Thomas any grace and mercy. Uh, one thing I wanna speak about is, um, I know Dr. Laboon, you own your own business, am I correct? Uh, Ms. Hancock, I know your family, they own the, I don't know your family, but I understand that they are owners of Hancock Fabric. I don't know what your, uh, relationship is with that as far as working there or how finances go, but that doesn't matter. Um, so what I wanna talk to you about is, say for instance, you have someone who, as you know, with HIPAA. One of your employees goes out and gives out information on a, on one of your ris, on one of your patients. Gives out information, makes fun of one of your patients or anything like that. Are you willing, and you find out about, are you willing to keep that person, knowing that they have just, uh, caused a distrust with your organization, with that patient, not only your pa, that patient, but other patients? If you would answer me, would you be willing to keep that person, knowing that they violated the trust of your patients?
It would depend on circumstance.
Okay. Uh, same thing like with Hancock Fabric, I'll say again, we've got the Quilters Company in April. And if you had one of your, if one of the employees at your family's organization were to be making fun of Quilters Company in, in any derogatory way, I'm sure that the owners of Hancock Fabric would be like, you've got to go. So as Pastor Walton was saying, Dr. Shively's contract is up, I believe, June thirtieth of this year. It should not be renewed. It shouldn't take that we come here every month with reasonings why his contract should be renewed. This alone should be enough to tell you why his contract should be renewed. You saw a ton of kids up here, African-Americans, that have to, when they see Dr. Shively, I'm telling you, one of the first things they see is this picture right here, that picture, of him making fun of our students, a football player. And it wasn't that he, it wasn't all of a sudden thing, this was something he had to go put in play from buying the wig, the durag, the gold teeth, and the grill, the chain and everything. This was in his heart to make fun of our culture, and that hurts me, that's why I'm here every month speaking on that. You desecrated our culture, and you thought it was funny to you and whoever else was at that board meeting. And I've met with you on several occasions, as I've said before, I don't feel that these trainers that you go into are working. I see in the Agenda six, five point twelve, uh, one, two, that you took off, uh, I think it accumulates about three days of meeting with Doctor, with, uh, Dr. Palmer and people, whoever the other person was. And I've asked you, when I've met with you, have you spoke with any family members, any people in the audience? Not, not any of us, but just people in general, not community leaders or anything like that, but just people. Have you spoke with any white family who has a biracial child? This affects them too, it affects just white people in general, you don't even have to have a black kid. But there are people out there that this affects, people in general, it doesn't, it's, this is not a black thing. You embarrassed our district, and you should not be rewarded with another, uh, contract. That's, that's plain simple on that right there, you should not be awarded with a new contract. But as I've asked you, have you spoke with other community people, with other members of our community? You've taken those classes then, uh, the past two weeks ago, and I'm gonna challenge you right now, if the board or, uh, the attorney, Mr. Holland, will allow you to do it, to stand up here and explain to us, tell us some of the things that you've learned from Dr. Dr. Palmer. There was a great old article about you, maybe in December, about all the things that you've learned. Dr. Palmer put out there, you've learned so much. You should be able to speak to these people right. You should be able to speak to these people right now and give them a synopsis, a briefing of what you've learned about our, our culture that you thought was something to make fun of. And again, like I said, I challenge you, you have the heart to go out and make fun of us. Have the heart to stand up here and tell us what you learned about us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, I want to make sure that anybody is here who wants to speak, has an opportunity to do so. Again, is there anybody else who would like to speak on items which are not on tonight's agenda?
Good evening. My name is Tracy Lennox. I am a 1999 graduate of Paducah Tillman. I currently have a student, uh, who is in the Paducah City School District thriving student. Um, I want to get up here and speak today that I am also asking the board not to renew Dr. Shively's, um, contract in June. Um, I've asked a few people in the community, uh, why they think, what good has he done for the district? And everybody, he notoriously always says the Innovation Hub, gorgeous building. Um, they talk about all vocational classes that are offered here. But if memory serves me correctly, Tillman always had a vocational school, I believe. So it's just been upgraded. So that's to me not enough to re, because we have a beautiful building. Tillman already had excellent vocational school prior to this building. Um, so that to me, that's not reason enough to renew his contract. Um, and the equity audit speaks volumes for itself. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd, who'd like to speak on items which are on or not on our agenda tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have no disregard for Dr. Shively. But every time I see my grandson, who is a junior at probably the best school in Kentucky at Manuel, when he goes to bed or when he gets up and he puts on his durag, I'm offended. It hurts. I want you to know, I believe you see the Confederate flag hanging as you enter, can, enter Paducah. I think everybody has said, hey, it's a disgrace to Paducah. It hurts Paducah. That's the same way it is when you Google Paducah City Schools and you see the black face. It hurts.
Thank you.
My name's Amina Watkins, and I do have two kids who are currently in the school district. Um, myself, just like Andy Alma, have been coming, um, for the last few, um, monthly meetings. And it's disheartening to still hear, um, the comments and being reminded. Um, and just like you come here to these meetings and we speak on, um, the behavior and the acts that Dr. Shively has done to hurt this community, um, we're constantly reminded. Um, our kids are constantly reminded. And I did see on the agenda where he has taken time off or asked for more trainings. In the last month that I was here, um, I had spoke and read the letter that I'd emailed the board. And I've yet to meet with the two board members that had came and met with me afterwards and said that they would meet with me. So I'm still waiting. Yeah, I'm still waiting on that meeting, for that one-on-one. Um, but in regards to Dr. Shively, he can go to these trainings. And just like I previously stated in my letter that I read last month, he can say that he's learning something, but where's the proof? If he's only coming to you guys and giving the feedback of things that he's learning and not actually talking to the community, talking to the kids, and putting those things into actions, then it's, it's dead knowledge. Or how do we know that he's learning it at all? You know, the proof has to be in our students. Um, all in all, it's about the kids. It's what's best for the kids. We can come in, we can say the same things over and over. Um, but what is this doing to our kids? I just sat up here and watched, you know, our middle schoolers give an awesome presentation of the things that I felt they're doing to, to heal and to build that camaraderie, um, within our school district that has been missing, um, from the work of Mr. Ross and all the teachers that have put it in middle school. That's what this district used to have a long time ago. I'm not a, a Tillman graduate, but you know, living in the county and seeing, you know, I know Ms. Atkins, we went to school together, but, um, seeing, you know, the environment that Tillman had and the team spirit and the school spirit that they had, you know, I always admired that, you know, being out in the county and seeing how that's diminished and seeing that, um, the things that Dr. Shively has done to this community and now seeing our younger kids who are trying to bring that back. What can we do to heal if we don't take away the thing that is poisoning in us? If we can't take that away, if he won't step away, then how can we continue to heal? You know, if we're being poisoned, you got to stop drinking the poison. Take away the poison so we can heal, so this community can heal. If he won't resign, I pray and I hope that you take every voice that you've heard over the last year since we've been dealing with this. You take that, you listen, and you do the right thing. His contract does not need to be renewed at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members who would like to speak? Hearing none, I think we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is item five point zero. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Excuse me, is there a second to approve tonight's consent agenda? Are there any questions from the board regarding any items that are on the consent agenda? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item six point one, insurance for PPS Foundation. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education purchase directors and officers liability insurance on behalf of the Paducah Public Schools Foundation for $2,008 with Kealan Holland through Cincinnati Insurance. Is there a motion to approve item six point one?
I'll make a motion that we approve item six point one, insurance for PPS Foundation.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board?
Can you explain, uh, what's this, uh, education, which is directors and officers liability? Which insurance are we talking about? Is that not, this is the first time I'm seeing this.
Yeah, this is, uh, in conversations with our, um, Paducah Public Schools Foundation Board, um, having insurance in case there is, um, there was a question relative to, um, the balance that we have in there, that that's a little bit more than we've had in the past. If there's an accusation, um, if they're covered by the district insurance. And so we ran that through our district insurance carrier. Um, and so we found out that they would not be covered. We thought they would originally because that's part of the public schools. And so we looked at, um, what it would cost and relative to getting the insurance, um, in case there's an accusation. Relative to that, um, you know, Mark Whitlow, Chris Black, our board chair and vice chair, and so as we discussed through that, a hundred percent of money that's given to the foundation is spent on children. And so it was an expense that, um, asked Dr. Lapoon, which way we felt we ought to do that, that it would be something to cover them so that a hundred percent of the donations continue to still go to, um, students and not cover any, um, governance of the foundation.
Similar to having a bond on our finance officer, correct? I mean, it's a saying, it's having insurance in case there's a problem, or there's a loss of money that can't be explained. Are there other questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item six point two, student accident insurance renewal. The superintendent recommends the Paducah Board of Education accept a bid for Robert's insurance for renewal of student accident insurance for the 2022, 2022 school year, 2023 school year in the amount of $72,892.40. Is there a motion to approve student accident insurance renewal?
I'll make a motion that we approve student ac, item six point two, student accident insurance renewal.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item six point three, school security funds. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the Kentucky Department of Education's assistance in the amount of $80,665 for a variety of school safety facility upgrades. This money will reimburse the general fund for some of the school safety upgrades that were completed in fiscal year 21. Is there a motion to approve item six point three?
I'll make a motion, we approve item six point three, school security funds.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item six point four, BG five document, PTHS football field artificial turf installation, which is BG twenty dash one six five. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the BG five document for the PTHS football field artificial turf installation. Is there a motion to approve item six point four?
I make a motion that we approve item six point four. BG dash five.
Sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Got you. Item six point four.
All right. Is there a motion to approve item six point four? Is there a second?
I'll second.
And there's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the, from the board? Yes, ma'am.
What is the ultimate benefit from getting turf?
So, Dr. Shively, you want to address?
This is actually, um, it's a different question maybe, um, later on, but this actually closes out. We initiated a contract and we started fundraising for turf. Um, and that was a couple of years ago, pre-COVID. And so Kentucky Department of Education has asked us to close that project out, which is a BG five process. We, I think we did a BG one, revised that, and it said we spent no money. And this is what we're actually doing, is closing that project out. Um, the opportunities that turf presents is you can use that field 24/7, 365 days a year. Um, when you look at the operational cost of what it costs to, uh, do maintenance, you know, cut grass, line, et cetera, fertilizer, uh, over 10 year period, there's an actually cost savings to the district. Um, in addition to that, all of the national research on injuries, I say national world research on injuries of turf versus grass, there's no difference, even though I saw something in the Superbowl that said differently. There is no significant difference in any angles or needs, et cetera. So, um, when we researched that, it was a cost savings over time. It allowed us more access to the field. Um, currently right now, our high school team is driving to the middle school to practice. So they would actually be able to practice on that field every afternoon. Relative to that, it would also open up opportunities for soccer to play on that field if they so wish. Um, in addition to that, if it's wet outside and it's February 15th, softball and baseball can take grounders, grounders on our fresh turf, where you might be able to do that. I don't know what it's obvious, but it's, um, lots of multiple uses for that and efficiency financially over 10 years.
Are there any other questions from the board regarding item six point four? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item six point five, revised BG one document. Paducah Head Start land acquisition. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the revised BG one document for the Paducah Head Start land acquisition project. Is there a motion from the board to approve item six point five?
I'd like to mention, we approve item six point five.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item six point six, payments to contractors. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the payments to contractors for the Paducah Head Start preschool project. Make a farmer workman engineering, uh, JRA architects, and pay application number one to central paving, and the amounts of those payments are listed. Is there a motion from the board to approve this payments to contractors?
I make a motion, we approve item six point six, payment to contractors.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board regarding this payment? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. This is also a payment, this is item six point seven. This is also a payment to contractors. The superintendent recommends the Paducah Board of Education approve the payments to contractors for the Innovation Hub, BG seventeen dash one seven nine is outlined. This is payment application number thirty-five to contractor Ray Blackett, signed for $49,190 to JRA architects for $8,738. Is there a motion to approve item six point seven?
I'll make a motion, we approve item six point seven, payments to contractors.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item six point eight, change order, Paducah Innovation Hub, BG seventeen dash one seven nine. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the change order for the Paducah Innovation Hub, BG seventeen dash one seven nine. This is a credit that will return the unused portion of the direct purchase orders back to the district. Is there a motion to approve item six point eight?
I make a motion, we approve item six point eight, change order, Paducah Innovation Hub.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item six point nine, BG four, closeout document, Paducah Innovation Hub, BG seventeen dash one seven nine. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the BG four closeout form for the Paducah Innovation Hub BG dash, excuse me, BG seventeen dash one seven nine. Is there a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve item six point nine, BG four, closeout document, Paducah Innovation Hub, BG seventeen dash one seven nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? So is this the last time I have to say BG seventeen dash one seven nine?
Well, hopefully KDU will approve. We'll ask, the facilities approve that apart in two weeks. So approve that part, part of two weeks. We'll have the March board meeting, and BG five can be the last time you say.
I wanted to get it right this time. I didn't want to stumble, but I kind of didn't get it at the end. There's no questions from the board. Call the roll, please.
Dr. Koji?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Uh, item six point one zero interim contract with Ascendant Facility Partners LLC. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve interim contract for the guaranteed energy savings project proposal from Ascendant Facility Partners LLC for a cost not to exceed $2,130,000. The interim contract will become null and void upon the sale of the school revenue bonds. Is there a motion to approve item six point one?
I'll make a motion, we approve item six point one zero interim contract with Ascendant Facility Partners LLC.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Uh, are there any questions from the board? Dr. Shively, would you take a moment to explain that?
Yes, the drawings for, um, the, the majority of this work, I tried to explain them, they were updated, so. Um, relative to the Department of Education approving our financing option was using restricted funds, which is FSPK and SFCC monies. Um, we're part of the project with some bonding to upgrade Tillman's HVAC, which was last done in 1998, um, which would put a lot of extra. which was a lot of extra, well, a lot of extra efficiencies, number one. But two, it also upgrades the opportunity to pull viruses out of the air, which I think we all know we need during COVID, it would impact lighting across the district, so every classroom lighting upgraded. Water, gas savings in each building relative to that. What has happened is those drawings, KDE is now requiring those to be approved before we can do the full contract. But as you know, COVID has impacted lead times for a lot of equipment, and very specific, specifically the HVAC equipment. And so entering into an interim contract allows us to go ahead and order that this week. There's a sixteen to eighteen weeks lead time to get that. And so the drawings will be before you in March to approve, to send to KDD, once that's approved. The financing plan can be approved, and that would take four weeks roughly. So in ten weeks, we'll be back to the original way we were going to fund this last month. And the equipment will should come in sometime around that time, a little bit later. So this is the way to go ahead and start, and for the equipment, with the idea that we're not going to pay cash for it, we're going to bond that out, and we save the money, and the energy bills, the debt off the bonds, we can enjoy the bonds.
Excuse me, are there any other questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. Item six point one one, amended BG one document, guaranteed energy savings project. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the amended BG one document for the guaranteed energy savings project, that's BG twenty two dash one five five. Is there a motion to approve item six point one one?
I make a motion we approve item six point one one, amended BG one dash document guaranteed by the energy savings project.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, are there questions from the board?
I would just add, this is the financial statement that goes back to the amended contract, but again, we will revise in the future relative to our original plan, and we approve last month.
There's no other questions from the board, call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. And I understand we have need to go entertain.
I have one, ma'am.
Oh, my, my, thank you, yep, thank you. This is the item that we added to the agenda at the start of the meeting, this is item six point one two. This is part of, obviously, background information, this is a proposal from BFW. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the proposal for Bacon Farmer Workman for the special inspections and materials testing, which are necessary for the Paducah Head Start Preschool Project. Fee is not to exceed $48,200. Is there a motion from the board to approve item six point one two?
Still no.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve item six point one two, are there any questions from the board? This soil testing?
This is, yeah, some of it is special inspection, some is HVAC, balancing, et cetera. We have two proposals submitted to our architect and project manager, and between us two proposals, this is the best according to both the construction manager and the architect on the project.
Are there any other questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?
Yes. And I understand we have need to entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to KRS sixty one point eight one zero. So section one B, one, this would be to deliberations of the sale of real property. Section one C for discussion of pending or proposed litigation. And section one F is for discussions which might lead to the appointment or dismissal of an individual employee. Is there a motion to go into the executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into the executive session.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second, call the roll, please.
Dr. Coogee?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Laban?